Into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilman Williams, will you pray for us, please?
Let us pray. Father God, we come no other way but from heart to heart, leaning on your everlasting love. Father, I'm honored to thank you. Thank you for waking us up this morning, seeing another day. And Father, if we conduct the business of the city of Inks, we ask that you come in and magnify this city for it to be the greatest city that anyone can ever live in. Father, we just come to you for watch over, watch over the council and the mayor as we continue to try to make prosperous in this community. Father, as we come, we always give you the praise. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Wimbley.
Here.
Councilwoman Whiteley.
Present.
Councilwoman Washington.
Here.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Councilman Chisholm.
Here.
And Councilman Shaw is present, Mayor. We have six present today, and we do have a call.
Councilman Shaw is present or absent?
I'm sorry, absent. Thank you.
All right, perfect. And with the addition to allowing the chairperson from the Eastern Housing Commission, Will Miller, to speak with us during presentations, do we have an approval of the agenda?
With the approval, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
The movement is supported. Roll call, please.
Councilman Chisholm.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, discussion. I'm sorry, ma'am. Discussion?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, the agenda today, last week, we failed to bring a item to the table. And I was wondering, and maybe the attorney can answer this, if we need to bring that back to the table and express our reasons for it not coming to the table to minimize city liability?
What item were you particularly, were you speaking of?
The group home that was on John Daly.
Okay.
And I don't know if that needs to go on the agenda or not, or, you know, how we go about doing that, or if it's even necessary.
Yeah, good point. Attorney Jones?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I believe the matter that Councilwoman Wiley is talking about is the one that never was seconded. It fails for lack of a second. Is that the one you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
Yes. If there was an intent to vote it down, once a vote is not passed, that's when you need to articulate the reasons that we have previously discussed. In this instance, it doesn't have to be brought back to be voted down, but if it's challenged in circuit court, those reasons for a denial should exist. This can be brought back for a particular articulation on a vote if it happens to get to a vote.
Okay, but since it doesn't, we can just leave things the way they are at this point?
Right. It hasn't been acting on at all. So there, I would advise you that there is potential liability. In this fact, it's never, it's properly came out of planning commission, but it was never acted upon by city council. So if the goal is to attempt to preserve or protect some liability, I think it might probably be wise to be brought back, but that doesn't mean it will necessarily fail.
Okay.
I think your concern is valid. I'll be clear. If you're concerned about protecting liability for a city, a vote, and a proper articulation as to why it wasn't passed, should be made.
Okay.
What's your pleasure? Would you like to add it back to the agenda?
Well, to be honest with you, I'm not, I don't know if it's necessary. He said we never acted upon it at all, so we don't have to articulate any reasons for not acting upon it.
Right.
So I need something, I need something a little clearer in order to make any type of move here.
Yeah. And I know that one of the things that the planning department was concerned about was us getting passed a second reading of the tax amendment for the adult foster care homes. And we do have that on the agenda for tonight. Maybe we bring it back up next council meeting.
So if that tax amendment is passed, from what I'm reading, it's not necessary for us? And I don't, I don't know if I'm getting out of order here or not. I'm just trying to clarify.
No, this is part of the, this is part of the agenda. You're in order. Go ahead.
So I just, if that tax amendment passes, there'll be no need for them to even come before council anymore for special land uses and things of this nature, correct? Because we'll be in line with the state.
That is.
Right?
You're exactly correct, Member Wiley.
Okay. Thank you. I'm fine.
Okay. So has the movement properly supported? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Councilman Washington, Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six, five yeas, I'm sorry.
All right, motion carries. A presentation, Chairman Will Miller, Eastern Housing Commission.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Good evening to everybody.
Good evening.
Well, my name is Will Miller. I am currently the chairperson for the Eastern Housing Commission. I wanted to come before the board today to give some information out that as the day has progressed, may have already come to the public attention, but on August 1st, first, we had a special meeting of the Eastern Housing Commission. After that meeting, the executive director, Paul Bunker, is no longer with the Eastern Housing Commission. We have other investigations and situations that are unfolding too right now that I can't quite go into yet, but I did want to update council with regard to the executive director spot. We do hope to have a special meeting here in the coming days, working towards trying to get a acting director for us while we go out and do a strong research for Inks. So just wanted to let everybody know. I don't, I can't answer a whole lot of questions. I don't know if there's anything pertinent that anybody wants to ask that I can't answer. I can try.
Any questions from the body?
I'd just like to thank the chairman for bringing it forward and informing us of this situation. I'd like to thank him for keeping us abreast.
Yes.
Good. And then also to Mr. Chair, also to Mr. Chair, if you could, please, when you guys have the next special meeting, if you could forward that information to the council as well, please.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you guys so much, and we'll be, we'll be here too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairman, for your leadership. Keep moving forward. Thank you. All right, public hearing. City Clerk?
Public hearing to consider an amendment to the Easter Code of Ordinance being section 97.001 through 97.999 pertaining to streets and sidewalks.
Is Mr. Bibers on the line? Let's see him down there if we can get him off mute.
I sent it.
Can you hear us? I can hear you now.
Yes, sir.
All right.
To Mayor and Council, it's a public, this is the first reading, I'm in the adoption of a new sidewalk ordinance and updating our current ordinance, which was, came about in September of 1957. So as you know, it's 63 years old. So I'm bringing forth to you a new ordinance that spells out the rules and regulations that we have to be governing ourselves by, oh, excuse me. And we are to govern ourselves by, in accordance with the sidewalk. This will allow us to go out and evaluate every sidewalk in the city of Inks and assess them, and then put a sidewalk program together, and then be able to go out and award a contract to an individual and begin to repair sidewalks in the city of Inks for assessing the residents, either by sending them an invoice or putting it on their tax bill. So this ordinance has teeth. I hope you guys have read it has teeth in it. It allows us to do things accordingly and in order with the state ordinance on sidewalks. So I entertain any questions now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
In the ordinance, it was saying 90, what does it say? What does it say? 30, 90 days? I'm trying to look it in my packet. In order to, once you go out and do the assessment, and once you notify the homeowner, how long does the homeowner have to complete the work?
That would be at the privilege of Mayor and Council. You will set those guidelines once we are finished doing the evaluation of the sidewalk and bring that back before you with the assessment and the recommendation from our engineering firm.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Mayor Pro Tim, were you done?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Councilman Williams?
Yeah. I know a lot of our sidewalks been tore up by trees, okay? And I notice a lot of them trees on city property between the sidewalk and the curb. So now, once that be determined, who's going to be responsible for that?
And the ordinance, if you had the opportunity to look at it, it states that the homeowner is responsible for maintaining the sidewalks in front of their property. So this ordinance, like I said, will give us that teeth that we need to enforce that after we go out and do the inspection and we determine what needs to be done at each sidewalk within the city of Inks. Like I said, once we do that, Mayor and Council, I can go out for bid, award a contract, and begin to repair, replace sidewalk. And like I said, we either assess the homeowner on their taxes, or we will send them an invoice. Because maintenance of a sidewalk is the responsibility of the homeowner.
Even if between the sidewalk and the curb?
It's the sidewalk, the maintenance of the sidewalk is responsible of the homeowner, sir. I mean, if I'm, the attorney's on, so you can add, he could chime in if he liked.
Okay, and, okay, so not, we got that on for the sidewalks and the street part. Okay, so what do we do in the case of people who have a big tree that's came up out the ground into the middle of the sidewalk? Okay, what happens there? Who pays for that?
I'm trying to understand your question. So you're saying?
Okay, we got some trees. We got some trees that's growing up on, between the sidewalk and the curb, and it's, and it's growing up over into the sidewalk, okay? That tree, who's responsible for that?
So, we're looking at repairing the sidewalk, not doing nothing to the tree.
How you gonna, how you gonna repair the sidewalk if the tree already been pushed up?
Because you have to take that sidewalk out, and most have you killed the roots underneath that sidewalk. You remove the roots from that sidewalk, and you put the sidewalk back in. If you can't remove the roots, then the tree will have to come down.
You say the attorney agree on this? Because I thought anything from the sidewalk to the curb would actually be the responsibility of the city.
No, I said the attorney can comment if he'd like, but that is the ordinance. The ordinance has stated that maintenance of a sidewalk is the homeowner's responsibility, not the city's. It's our job to go out and assess the sidewalk and make sure they're in proper condition, and that's what we will do. And once we assess it, then we have to determine what needs to be done at each location.
I thought, I thought maybe, maybe, maybe we need to get some advice from the attorney because we sit on here or not. But, but I thought from anywhere from the sidewalk to the street is the responsibility of the city. Now, I mean, I, I mean, maybe it's a change or something, but I always thought that was it.
But like I said, we're updating our ordinance to be in compliance with the state ordinance. The state ordinance states clearly the maintenance of a sidewalk, even as a business or homeowner's, the responsibility of the homeowner. It is our job to go out and assess it and make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. So we're going to do our part in going out and assessing it and make a determination what needs to be done. I mean, some sidewalks, you might not have to do anything, and some, you might have to replace a flag or two, but we're going to go with the council's privilege. I will go out and put out bid for a contract. Once I do that, then we begin to repair these sidewalks. We will assess the homeowner either through their tax bill or send them an invoice, however council wants to do that.
Member, Member Washington?
That's Williams.
Williams. I'm sorry, Member, Member Williams. Once we have an active sidewalk inspection program, it enables the city to properly act on behalf of disrepaired sidewalks. Now, when it comes to liability about tree roots or sidewalks being uprooted by the tree roots, that's something I would prefer we not discuss in open forum, giving, you know, potential litigants an opportunity to try to take advantage of a particular situation. I'm more than happy to discuss it with you. The actual ordinance has been published. It's been read, but I, the potential liability therefore, I'll discuss with you one on one so you can have a better understanding at a later point, if that's okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Is this that long awaited sidewalk policy we've been talking about for years? Is this what, this will constitute?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from this body? So this is a public hearing, City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, the public hearing needs to be opened.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Is there discussion? Okay. Do we need a roll call on that?
Yes, I'll do a roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
We have five yeas, Mayor.
Right, motion passes. So, Councilman Chisholm, if you can just give everyone a rundown on what they need to do, if they would like to speak to this topic?
Oh, callers that have called in for the public, you could use your keypad to press star nine to raise your hand, and that way we can recognize you during this time to speak during the public hearing about the sidewalk ordinance. We have one caller, raise your hand. And please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Vanelle Williams. I reside at 3630 John Daly. And I believe, Councilman Williams, I understand his question because I have a tree that's on city property that's between the easement. It's between the curb and the sidewalk. It was there when we moved into the house, and the roots had busted and pushed up the sidewalk. You're telling me that it's on city property, but I'm going to be responsible for paying for the repair?
That is, that is correct. That's the city's ordinance.
I thought the city ordinance was for the sidewalk that actually runs in front of your house from the sidewalk to your porch or to the front of your house, or down the public sidewalk. I'm talking about my sidewalk that comes from the curb to the sidewalk where the tree is, and the roots have busted up the sidewalk. I'm responsible for that sidewalk, not the one that runs in front of my house. The one from the sidewalk to the curb where the tree is, that I didn't plant.
Mr. Bibers, can you speak to that, please?
I'm trying to understand what she's, what she's saying.
We may have to just go out and look at it.
Yeah, I would have to come out and look at that, ma'am, because I'm not clear on what you're saying.
The public sidewalk, that one that runs in front of my house, from one corner to another corner, from one street to another street, the public sidewalk. I understand that that might be on the homeowner. I'm talking about the short sidewalk from the public sidewalk to the street between the curb and the public sidewalk where there's trees planted, because I have one right now, and my sidewalk, the roots have come up and busted up the sidewalk. I'm responsible for the city easement sidewalk, not the one that runs the house, the one that runs to the street.
I would have to come out and take a look, but if it butts up to your property, yes, you are responsible for it.
It, it, what do you mean if it busts up to my property?
If it busts, if it, if it runs into your property, yes, you're responsible for it, ma'am.
It runs from the curb to the sidewalk.
And it runs, it connects to your property, then yes, you're responsible for it, ma'am.
So you're telling me that all properties in the city of Inks are from the curb, from the street, to the main sidewalk?
Like I said, because.
It's not maintained by, it's not city easement? Is that what you're telling me?
I have to come by and take a look at what you're talking about. But so it's all sidewalks run right in front of your property. If it runs right in front of your property.
I'm not talking about the, if it runs directly in front of my property, the property next door, all the way to the corner. I'm talking about from the side, that main sidewalk, there's a short sidewalk to the street that allows people, when they get out their car, to walk up to the main sidewalk. There's trees planted in those easements between the sidewalk and the curb that have now grown, and the roots have come up and busted up that sidewalk, not the main. That the public walks, because the public doesn't walk down that sidewalk that I'm talking about. Anybody that would, if a police officer came, he'd have to walk up that sidewalk from the street to the main sidewalk. I'm not talking about the main sidewalk.
Like I say, I have to come out and take a look at what you're talking about, because I'm not clearly understanding what you're saying.
Okay, the city easement property is what I'm talking about.
If you'd be so kind.
If I might, Mayor, Jerome, don't, don't go back and forth. I think I could be clear. And again, I don't want to debate every potential liability issue. If the tree is on private property and it pushes up the public sidewalk, that's the owner's responsibility. If the tree is on the park between the sidewalk and the street, it's the easement, and it pushes up the sidewalk, that's city responsibility.
The city easement. I have a sidewalk between the, between the sidewalk, the main sidewalk that the public runs down, and the city.
Concern.
Is that sidewalk is busted up?
Back and forth with every scenario.
That's a call, call, call order. A call order. So, yeah, I think I got clarity and understanding what we're saying, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, you're welcome, Ms. Williams. So what we'll do is we'll follow up with you, but from what I'm understanding, if it's in the easement where the trees planted, that, let me finish, that is not your responsibility from hearing this, the city's responsibility. But we definitely will come out and follow up, because I understand what you're talking about. All right. Do we have any others from the public?
Yes, we do. We have more. Unmuting them now, and please state your name for the record.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think that's a very good idea, because we have a lot of.
Please state your name, I'm sorry, please.
I'm sorry, Shirley Hankerson. This is Shirley Hankerson. Yeah, I think that's a very good idea, because a lot of times what happens in our city, we have so many, we have so many people that have bought up rental property, and they ignore every, you know, what really needs to be done, done around the property to make it accessible for not only the tenants, but the citizens that live in the area, the neighbors. So I think that's a very good idea, because I see it every day. There's one right across the street from me and down the street. So please, hurry up, and they're both rental property. So, yes, that sounds very good.
Thank you so much for your comment. Councilman Chisholm, you got anybody else?
Yes, one more just raised their hand. Unmuting, and please state your name for the record. Caller with the last digits, 2727, please state your name for the record.
My name is Yolanda Lockett. I, I viewed the press release regarding Twin Towers voting location being moved.
This is not the, this is not the, you're out of order, Ms. Lockett. This is not the time for that.
Okay.
We're talking about streets and sidewalks, our new.
Okay.
So that would be.
Do I have to talk back to public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Councilman Chisholm?
Nope. That was it. I didn't, I didn't raise, lower this one's hand, because I believe that was Ms. Hankerson right here. And, or not, but it looks like that's it.
Okay. All right, motion to close public hearing?
So move.
There's support?
Support.
The movement properly supported. Roll call, please?
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams.
Yeah.
We have five yeas, Mayor.
All right, motion close the public hearing. All right, consent agenda?
Come on over.
There's support?
Support.
The movement properly supported. Roll call, please?
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
We have five yeas, Mayor.
All right, motion carries. Boards and commissions. Anyone?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Washington?
I should get to it. I would like to reappoint Odin. Sorry, let me get to it. I would like to reappoint Clarence Odin Jr. to zoning board of appeals.
There's support?
Support.
The movement properly supported. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Wiley?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams. We have five yeas.
All right, motion carries. Do we have anything else? Councilman Washington?
Um, I had a question about the Parks and Rec Commission. Um, there's two mayoral appointments of, Shirley Hankerson, Opal Nolan is no longer a resident of the city of Inks, and Shirley Hankerson has the mayoral appointment. Would she get pushed back up to the district too, or how does that work?
No, I'll keep Shirley. It's the mayoral appointment, and you can just appoint someone to district two.
Okay. I have nothing else.
All right. I mean, let Shirley say something different, but I think that she's, she's doing a good job in that position, so let's keep it moving.
Oh, man.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Wiley?
Yes. I was, we were sent out a a application from a Ken, Ken Feely, I can't pronounce. But he had a somewhat impressive resume. And one of the things he listed was risk management. Now, he did not ask for a specific commission, board or commission. He wanted to be utilized in wherever he was needed in the city of Inks. He wanted to be involved. Now, one of, like I said, one of the things he listed is risk management, and that's something we have not availed ourselves of in years, and it's something that we desperately need. So I was wondering. So I was wondering if there was some way we might be able to incorporate him in something, and possibly, you know, with his permission, of course, utilize his skills in that area to assist the city.
Did you have a particular board you wanted to appoint him to?
No, I didn't really have a board I wanted to import him to, you know, appoint him to. I would think it would have to be something that incorporates, you know, that, that involves the city in some fashion. I'd have to go through it again, because I didn't, I, I didn't see anywhere, I mean, he fits in a lot of places. So I don't know how we go about doing that, maybe just food for thought right now.
Okay. And then maybe we can, uh, get him on the Zoom call, and we can kind of interview him and see where he fits, if you'd like to do that with me.
That would be great, if we could, if we could manage that, or if maybe one of us or would like to even call him during the week and get his take on things, if that's permissible.
Yeah, that'd be great, if you could do that, and then maybe you guys follow up with me, and we get something with Rhonda, and we can get him moving. I'm looking at this, while you were talking, I was looking at the Police and Fireman Retirement, uh, Board of Trustees, and, uh, we need to reappoint you to that. Looked like you're, you were up in twelve twenty, I don't know if we did that, did we do that yet, Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Sorry, Mayor, I would have to go back and look.
Councilwoman Wally, can you remember if we did that or not?
Uh, it's twelve, I believe it's twelve twenty, Mayor.
I believe so.
Oh, so it's coming, it's coming, okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at, I was looking at Lorenzo's expiration too, I'm, is.
He is expired, am I correct, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, um, that, that appointment has expired under the Pension Board's, um, bylaws. Uh, he continues to serve until he's reappointed or someone is, um, uh, placed there and, and, you know, to replace him. So he's, his, his, um, appointment has expired, he continues to serve on the board.
Uh, Darren, let's meet you and Councilwoman Wally talk about that this week. So Councilwoman Wally, after you follow up with that gentleman, then, uh, we'll get on the phone with Rhonda, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
All right, good, then, do we have any other appointments? All right, here, now let's move right along, previous business.
Previous business is consideration and approval of an offer to purchase one residential house, which is located on the west side of Spruce, between Beach Street and Carlisle Street, and is legally described as duly noted, or three, five, four, four Spruce, in the amount of four thousand dollars to Platinum Acquisitions.
We'll move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, discussion?
Um, clarification for, um, yes, now, is this the same house that the, uh, interim special projects director advised that we sell for a dollar?
Yes. It was, it was actually, it, it was actually Charday Fleming before she left out, that, uh, said that we should sell it for a dollar, so.
No, we got, we got an email from the interim director who said he suggests we go ahead and sell it for a dollar. I remember reading that.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. But it was actually, it was actually Charday Fleming who told us to, to put that forward before she had left out, that, uh, we had a relationship with Platinum Acquisitions, because it relates to him in the past, um, receiving homes for a dollar off our demolition list to be able to recondition. So I just told him to put that forward back, pretty much in the same recommendation that she would have recommended if she was still with us. So, yeah, this is that property.
Okay, and one other thing, you, you keep saying we, we sell some houses. I am not familiar but, with but one, um, situation where the person had purchased the house, and the garage that was attached to the house wasn't on the deed, and we went ahead and sold that to them for a dollar.
Well, I apologize, I was talking about the previous council and previous administration as it relates to the neighborhood stabilization program.
Okay, all right, well, just confirming that.
Yes, ma'am.
That we're now offered four thousand dollars for.
We actually had a bidding war, kind of going back and forth, and, uh, the other person, uh, we told him what, what Platinum offered, and they didn't respond. Uh, Caitlin, are you on the line? Caitlin Hines?
Thanks, yes.
Yeah.
Caitlin, did we get a response back from the other?
Yes, um, we did, but it was too late, I think, so. We, I didn't want it to escalate any further, because otherwise it was just gonna get too much, and they were, I gave them a timeline, and I called the guy back, and he didn't answer, so, he called back today, actually, so. I told them we'd find another possible location.
Okay, okay, so, no, I mean, did, did he make an offer, or did he say?
Yes, he said five. But I just want to caution everyone, um, we do have a relationship with Anthony from Platinum Acquisitions, and he has come back and put a lot of work into these houses and sold them. Um, so that's why I think it's better to choose the Platinum, um, offer, because we know that he will rehab the house. And this, this other offer, while we don't, we're not sure.
How much you say the other offer was due, I didn't give?
Five thousand. Now, you know, I can't say, I can't speak for the gentleman, uh, the gentleman is actually, um, uh, Mr. Paisley. Um, Mr. Paisley and his family does a lot of work within the community. Um, I don't know if you guys are familiar with, um, Mr. Fa, Mr. Paisley and, and what he does, but he's, uh, pretty solid. So, I mean, it'll be up to this body, if you guys want to consider it going back and forth. However, I know that Anthony Rayad does a, a lot of good work in the community, and has been doing a lot of good work in the community that has helped our property values to continue to rise in the community. Um, realtors are calling me from all over, talking about Inkster and property being hot in the city of Inkster. So, um, I know that Anthony is a big part of that with the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, so, you know, I, I would lean either way, but it's, it's up to this body, just putting it out there.
Mr. Mayor.
Come on, Councilman Williams?
Did, did, Ms. Hines, ask Ms. Hines, did you put a deadline on, on, on the, uh, the offer? Because you, you made, you made me feel like you cut a deadline.
Caitlin, I'm unmuting her.
Okay.
So when I wrote up, um, or basically I put the deadline on, um, for when the, um, agenda items were due, and I didn't get the last offer until today. And I tried to call Mr. Paisley to see if he would like to counter offer before I put this offer up, and I didn't get a response, and I couldn't leave a voicemail.
Yeah, don't. So you didn't have a, so you did not have a deadline on it?
I tried, my deadline was just when this was due, that was my deadline, and I said, there was no response until today. And I tried to reach out.
It's a pleasure to this body, I mean, you, you know, of course, we had a motion on the floor, but you can amend it, go back, table it, back again, put a deadline on it at this point, from this body, if you want, it's so, it's up to you.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that we, if we had an offer for five thousand dollars, naturally, we should take the five thousand dollars forward, we are.
Oh, yeah, I mean, hey, let, let it keep going up.
I mean, what I want to take, if we can get, if we can get, she's saying we can get five, he offered five. It's, it's character, I, I happen to know both of them, both of them character, it is meaningful.
Oh, yeah, both of them excellent, no doubt about that. So, let, let, let's do this, I mean, if it pleases this body, I mean, because, you know, obviously, it's, it's a hot property. Um, let's go back, let's, let's put a deadline on it for, you know, on the Wednesday before, city council meeting before, and then see what it, see where it lays. Go from there, kind of what Caitlin was trying to do, it's up to you, this.
If Reverend Williams is through, um, I just want to interject here that, um, um, this man was aware of the deadline she put out, right? It was included when she went back to him, correct? She didn't just set one for herself, she informed him too, because I'm not hearing that.
No, I tried to inform him.
So he did not, he was unaware of the deadline?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, in, in knowing that, and in, uh, trying to be as even or whatever as we can be, um, without regard to how we feel about the individual people, a bid is a bid, and you take the highest bid normally. So I don't want us to get in the habit of arbitrarily making decisions based because this person does a good job when you say both of them do the good job, a good job.
Yeah, and, and Councilwoman Wally, if you were, if you were done, I don't think that was our intent, I think it, it's, it's intent to, to, like you said, make it fair across the board.
Right, exactly.
If, if Mr. Paisley wasn't aware that, you know, you know, he had to answer by a certain time to give a counter offer, I think that we should table it again, and then make it public that we have, um, the property, and, you know, the property is going to take bids, and then the highest bid wins, and it closes on this particular date, and it's done.
And I, I, I support, I, I, I move for that motion, Mr. Mayor.
So, Felicia Forrest to be, I'm sorry, City Clerk, for us to be proper, what should, what should we do right now?
Um, he's amended his motion. Are you amending your motion? Councilmember Williams, to state, to table?
And we'll put the debt.
And with the deadline?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, so, uh, the deadline will be, what, the Wednesday before?
Yeah, so that will be on the twelfth of August.
All right.
Is there any particular time, is it the twelfth, at twelve P M., or?
I like that.
Okay.
Let's do that, and Caitlin can spearhead that and move that for, for us. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Um, I, 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 was there support for that motion, that's what I'm.
Uh, Councilwoman Wally has some more to it.
All right, perfect, discussion on that? Council, Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Um, this is, I'm not, um, it's not, it's regarding that, but not this issue. Um, as far as our demolition list, it is public, and it's, it is on our website, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And, and I did send it all to, to each of the council members as well.
Yeah, okay. I, I didn't realize we had that many parcels, did you?
Oh, yeah, we, I've been working back and forth with the state and, uh, between the state land bank and the county land bank, and what we own in Inkster, it's about seventeen hundred parcels out there.
Wow, okay. Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Watley?
Yeah.
We have five yeas.
All right, perfect, uh, moving along to our first reading?
We have a first reading to consider an amendment to the Inkster Code of Ordinance being section nine seven point zero zero one through nine seven point nine 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 pertaining to streets and sidewalks.
It's your pleasure.
It's just the first reading, Mayor.
Oh, so we're good, nothing need to be said, all right.
Nothing, no.
No discussion, no, no. All right.
No, you did it at the public hearing.
All right, yeah, yeah, for sure, all right, sound good, second reading?
Um, this is a second reading and the approval to consider amendments to Senior Citizen Housing Pilot Ordinance number five three one in connection with Cherry Hill Senior Citizen Housing Development, Cherry Hill Place Apartments.
It's your pleasure. And this is approval, correct?
Yes, this is for the second reading and the approval of it.
Right. So it's proper for us to have motion support discussion, so.
Yes.
It's your pleasure, Council. There's support?
There was.
It's a bit, it's a bit moved.
Yeah.
Who moved it?
No one moved it.
Come on.
Okay.
A move, Mayor Pro Tim, okay?
Yes.
There's discussion?
Mayor, I'm sorry, who seconded, I could not hear.
Watley.
No, I didn't.
You didn't, Watley?
No, I ain't say a word, nope.
I'm like, I couldn't hear anybody.
That was Mayor Pro Tim, right?
She, she moved it.
Okay, I'll support it.
Okay.
No one, no one on my end.
Okay, so now Washington is supporting?
Okay.
Okay, I apologize, Wally.
Okay.
All right, okay, so discussion?
Um, yes, I do.
Go ahead.
This is the pilot in which they want us to, um, continue the, the, um, four percent. My question is, have, when we've, uh, transferred these things in the past, or if we have, is there a possibility of asking for more than that four percent pilot, or no?
Mr. Curriton, if you can answer that question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of any, um, particular, uh, you know, barrier or prohibition against that number being renegotiated. Um, as I was preparing for this a couple of weeks ago, I, I didn't find any recent transactions, um, where a property was transferred, and I'm, I'm not aware of anything, and, um, so, you know, there was, there was no kind of past practices, uh, to base, um, base this on. I think, you know, from the city standpoint, um, in my mind, I'm looking at it from a revenue standpoint, and can this, um, you know, not only generate additional revenue for the city, which I expect it will, but it can also, um, uh, you know, in talking with others in terms of the, the history of the property, um, we'll see some, some improvement in terms of some investment in the property, um, and overall improvement of the, the physical, um, you know, plant of the property. So, you know, and, and responding to Member Watley's question, um, no, I'm not aware of anything that would prevent us from doing that, but at the end of the day, whether it's increasing the, um, amount of the pilot or generating some value and additional revenue in other ways, um, you know, from the, from the treasury standpoint, we're looking kind of at that bottom line, revenue number, and I, I have a, a high level of, of expectation and confidence that this is going to generate some additional revenue for the city, um, from, from a tax revenue, property tax revenue standpoint.
But isn't this, uh, tax revenue something they asked the state to do after they've gotten this? And when we're talking about that four percent, that must have been negotiated some time ago.
For sure.
Everything, everything has escalated as far as property, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just seeing if we can't position Inkster in a, a better position. This is something, we have something they want, and they want it for the same thing whoever got it for ten years ago, or whenever.
Well, we're, we're not talking about, we're not talking about a fixed dollar amount, we're talking about a percentage. So as the rents increase, there is, there is a corresponding increase, um.
But if we don't get those rents, we're still just getting the pilot, right?
We'll get, we get a percentage, uh, we, the, the formula is based on a percentage, uh, which includes the rent. So it is a, a number that is, um, you know, able to increase as, as the, uh, value of the rents go up.
Okay, so.
So we're not, we're not on a fix, we, we, we don't have a fixed amount, we have a fixed percentage of, of what we collect.
Do we know what percentage the rents have gone up since we allowed that four percent?
No, I, I, I don't, um.
Shouldn't we find that out? Shouldn't we find that out before we make a decision of this nature?
Well, I mean, if that's, if that's a, a number that you would like, I mean, we've, you know, we've been looking at this for several weeks now. Um, as I said, I mean, we can, we can continue to focus on the pilot, but again, I think the, from the city standpoint, however the money comes in, uh, the alternative is we, we have property that, that, you know, I haven't been inside the property, but, uh, you know, the people that I've talked to have been pretty clear that the property is in need of some investment, and I don't know the likelihood of that kind of investment coming from the current, uh, current owner of the property, um, as well as providing the capital needed to, uh, expand on, um, some of the plans that the, the buyer is proposing, which would, uh, provide some, uh, you know, additional benefits to the city from a tax revenue standpoint. So I, I, I think I understand your point, but it's not just about a fixed percentage, you know, uh, that there are some larger factors and, and larger, um, dynamics that are going to, at the end of the day, uh, dictate exactly how much revenue the city is able to get, and what's going to be the overall condition. to get and what's going to be the overall condition of the property.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is I would need to know that in order to make an intelligent decision about.
Well, that, that's, that's, that's what we, we covered, uh, two weeks ago. We didn't, we didn't go in depth on, on the pilot. We went in depth on some of the other things that are being proposed by the, uh, by the buyer. That's, that's precisely the, the, I think in my point, the strength and the, the, um, strong, uh, suit, this, you know, the, the, the strength of this, um, transaction is that it gets a buyer in here that's going to put, be able to provide capital that I, I'm not sure that the current owner is able to provide.
Okay, so then what, what is it?
Hold on one second, point of order.
Hey, I'm sorry.
No, uh, Councilwoman Watley, you still have the floor?
Yes, um, uh, all of that is well and good, but I, you know, no one comes into a negotiation or a process without there being benefits on both sides. Now, we're getting the same thing we always got and you're saying they're fixing up this property, so that's a benefit and we'll get a portion of that. Are the rents unchanged? Cause I understand a lot of this was, uh, was, uh, section eight or senior?
Uh, there, there, there are both of those. Um, I just don't have the, the, you know, exact numbers of, of what the rents have done through the years. Um, but again, it's, it's, it, we, we, the pilot is based on a formula, one, one number of which, or one factor of which is the, the percent that we're talking about, that four percent figure for the pilot. The other components of the formula, um, include the, the overall rents that are collected. So just when you start talking about the pilot, uh, those are, 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 you know, the number of factors that go into it, only one of which is, is the four percent. Um, so that's just the, the way that the, the pilot payment is structured and those, those amounts do go up, um, as the, you know, as the rents go up, even, you know, even with a, a, a flat percentage, um, or, or a fixed percent, uh, those numbers are going to go up as, as the revenues go up or the rental, the, 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 the revenue generated from the rents go up.
Well, I must have been taking my council nap when all that other stuff happened, so. I, uh, I'm, I'm still wondering how we benefit ourselves, that's all. Thank you.
Well, I think too, just to add before I let, uh, Councilman Williams in, uh, Mr. Carrington, that they're adding a million dollars to, to the project as it relates to, um, the conditions of the property. I am sure that I've been in the properties and, um, I have family that live in the property now. So a million dollars to the project that they're adding, then also to their going after, which they've been pretty successful. Um, were very successful in other communities as relates to getting the state to, um, cover our total amount of taxes and the amount of, what is it, three hundred and how much thousands there?
I believe it was eighty-one, three eighty-one?
Three hundred and eighty-one thousand.
Yeah.
And, and tax, taxes. We're currently now with the four percent, how much are we getting?
It's, it's, it's between forty-five and fifty thousand is, is the, uh, the current, current figure.
Yeah, so while I see Councilwoman Watley's point is a very valid point, um, you know, definitely the million dollars in construction and renovations, of course, we know that's going to help with property values even in that area. And at the same time, with them actually going after that, uh, the tax share from the state on our behalf as well is going to help them too. So I would like to see, I mean, you know, it, it, it doesn't hurt to ask, oh, what would be fair and reasonable? We're talking about from four percent to seven percent, you know, I don't know, but I think it's a valid point.
Yeah, well, well, like I say, I mean, this, we've, this has, um, been out there for several weeks, you know, we, um, are, I think, and I, I think the, um, buyer may be on the line. Um, I have no particular, you know, uh, attraction to four percent. I'm just trying to do what's, what I feel is in the city's best interest and whether it comes through the pilot or through, through another source, at the end of the day, we want to have revenue coming in the door. Um, this property's been there for quite some time. I don't believe that there's a lineup of buyers, um, you know, lined up, uh, to purchase this property. Um, this is a very reputable buyer. They're proposing a, a transaction that will eventually, I, like I say, I think is going to benefit the city. Um, they're waiting in order to close on this property on the, on this approval. Um, you know, so if we have a problem with the four percent, you know, we've had time if we want to, want to take another look at this, but again, if we're trying to, to facilitate this transaction and not get locked into, to any one component and look at what is, is going to be in the long-term best interest of the city, that's all that I, I, I would recommend we, we concern ourselves with. Now, if, if someone has a particular problem with that number, we want to do some research and so forth, um, then let's do that. Uh, but again, I, I, this property, from my understanding, has been, you know, been operated in a certain manner for a number of years and I think we're going to see in a very short order that change. Um, this is not something that has been, uh, proposed or, or even thought of, um, in the, within the last several years and probably even longer than that. So I can, can understand the spirit of the, 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 you know, question and, and, and where, uh, Member Watley's, uh, ideas coming from, and I'm not in, and not in disagreement, but from the city standpoint, again, I think it's in our best interest to, to, to work with the buyer to facilitate this transaction. I think we're going to see a, a much better, um, uh, result, given the capital that the, that the proposed buyer can bring in, cause at the end of the day, that's what's going to be able to help, uh, bring about the improvement and eventual revenue generation and increased property taxes that the city wants to be able to endure.
Yeah, yeah. I agree. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Council, hold on one second, Councilman Williams.
Yeah. Uh, Dan, um, I, I, I think if I, if I'm not, uh, just clear me up right quick, I, I, this property went so long, it, it was, it was under pilot for so long and then it's supposed to, uh, supposed to have an ending program of the pilot. Uh, I heard you say that the state is going to kick in monies for this, is the state just kicking in money to help renovate it or the, the state is kicking in money to help improve the taxes?
No, um, and, uh, Cheryl, is, is Cheryl, if, uh, Stephen, if you could see if Cheryl's on the line, I think she can best explain.
Yeah, she has her hand raised. Yes, she got her hand.
So Cheryl is with, with the proposed buyer. Cheryl is, um, is, is she unmuted, Stephen?
Yes. Hi, this is Cheryl Charozewicz of Lark Properties. And the, uh, uh, I believe, uh, in answer to your question, Councilmember, um, the, there is a, uh, senior and disabled tax exemption that is, uh, offered by Michigan Compiled Law two eleven seven D, not to bore you with, uh, details like that, but basically whereby if a senior property is exclusively senior and was financed under certain historic finance, uh, certain programs, uh, the state will reimburse the municipality one hundred percent of the ad valorem property taxes on this particular, uh, under this particular program. So that is, we've been able to get this program in place on approximately seven other properties throughout the state and to get this program, we will be investing the one million dollars, uh, that, uh, had been mentioned previously in immediate improvements and that it would be the final piece, we believe that this property would need in order to qualify for that exemption. And again, that would allow the, the city of Inxter to be paid, uh, full ad valorem taxes on the senior portion. Again, there are two parcels there, family and senior. This would only apply to the senior portion.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Proton?
I'm sorry, is, was Councilman, uh, Williams done?
Yes.
Okay, um, what's going to happen with the water bill? I know, um, Councilman Shaw asked a question two weeks ago. Will the, um, current bill be paid, uh, before?
Yes, the, the, um, we, we've been, been working with the, uh, buyer as well as, um, because that's, that's obviously an, an issue, um, uh, will be an issue, um, for traditionally is handled at closing, um, because that obligation does transfer with the, um, um, you know, the tran, the transfer of the property from the seller to the buyer. Um, so we've been working with the buyer and, and identifying any issues with that bill and, and, uh, verifying the amounts and so forth. So as with any outstanding, uh, bill, we'll continue to move forward and, um, you know, work towards a resolution of any, any outstanding items, but it's something that's been provided. Um, both parties are aware of it and the buyer is, um, proceeding with that, uh, as part of the transaction.
Okay, so, okay, so is this something that we can put in to, um, the agreement that they are responsible for the water? Is it something that we can add to the agreement before each party sign? So to cover, um, our side of it?
Um, yeah, I mean, we, 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 they are, I mean, the, the, any, like with any, uh, water bill, it's, it's attached to the property. So that's what we go off of, um, you know, it's just like any, any property, if this property is transferred, uh, residential property is transferred, uh, between two parties, that, that has no bearing on, um, you know, the city's, uh, um, you know, having a, a right to collect on that obligation. We, we, our obligation is based on that property. Um, so something like that, I don't think would, would, would change because as far as I'm concerned, we, we have that full right, uh, to collect on the city's behalf for any outstanding, uh, uh, costs associated with that, that bill as we will with any other property.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
Just one quick, this one quick, um, the, the ad valorem tax is, uh, not a guarantee, but they have done it before, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, all right. Rule call please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Hmm, no.
Mayor Proton Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Chisholm?
Didn't I go first?
You didn't call me.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Washington.
We can, we can, we can, we use your second vote for, for, uh, Member Watley's first vote. Your is yours.
You called me the wrong name, you missed my name.
He's tired.
Yes.
Heavy as brown.
I forgive you. Okay, Mayor, we have four yays and one nay.
No, motion carries. One and two's second part of it?
Okay, the item number two is a second reading and approval of a text amendment to the city zoning ordinance pertaining to provisions for adult foster care homes per the recommendations of the planning commission. And for a list of affected ordinance sections, please see the background information.
All right, what's your pleasure? Learning?
Can you repeat that?
This is, um, a second reading and approval of text amendment TA twenty dash zero four to the city's zoning ordinance pertaining to provisions for adult foster care homes per the recommendations of the planning commission. For a list of affected ordinance sections, please see background information.
Doubles.
There's support? Is there support for discussion?
I'll support for discussion.
All right. All right, discussion. Any questions that relates to this? I know that, uh, this was something that was brought before the planning commission. Caitlin is actually on the line again, um, as it relates to us coming in compliance with the state rules for adult foster care, um, homes. Caitlin, would you like to speak to that?
Sure, so we are currently not in compliance with the state rules and this would just bring us into compliance, I guess.
What part are we out of compliance? Can, can anybody tell me what's specific, any specifics on, they say, they keep saying we're out of compliance, we're out of compliance, that can mean any number of things. What part of our ordinance doesn't match with their ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I think we have, uh, someone who can speak to that. Hand just came up, it's a phone number though.
Okay, hold on one second, let's see if Caitlin, Caitlin?
Yes.
And you got anything to add to that?
Um, so we can't treat, um, adult foster care facilities any differently than we treat residential homes. So, I mean, and I know, um, we worked really closely with, um, city attorney on drafting this, so if he has anything.
David, why don't you kind of speak to that as it relates to the legal factors behind this?
Yes, Ms. Hines is correct. What it is, it's with regard to the number of persons who will reside in a home. Uh, a law has recently passed and I, I know the person that Steve mentioned raised their hand is an attorney who I believe is representing one of the applicants that were at the last council meeting, but the mind is this, is that once our ordinance is in compliance with the state law, certain uses of property in the city of Inxter, it will not even come before council or planning. Basically, to prevent a certain type of use, the number of residents in a home, you would be, uh, in jeopardy of violating, you know, due process and equal protection. Um, so it is correct that our ordinance currently is out of compliance with state law and there was a matter that we did not, it failed for lack of a second at the last council meeting that Member Watley brought up as well. And based on what they're intending using, it was for less than certain number of members in that home. Again, if, if we don't bring it back, if we don't pass it and we don't bring our ordinance in compliance with state law, there is a potential that we would be defending ourselves from, you know, a lawsuit. But that is a decision that this council has to make as it relates to regulating the property in the city of Inxter.
I know that the, the main problem is the fact that, you know, we just have so many of, of, of these is not regulated already. So they wouldn't have to come through administrative hearing or anything?
No.
They could just open?
As long as the use is, uh, in compliance with the number of residents in that home, yes.
What's the number?
I think it's twelve.
So anything under twelve or anything over twelve, then we can regulate?
Correct.
Wow.
Know about that one. I think it's time to draw, uh, uh, line in the sand. Just from the reports that we get from the police alone, not even talking about the EMT, the fire department and the rooms, rooms that they have. Um, now that I'm against this type of business, at the same time, we definitely need to have some regulation.
Just a, a question, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Wasn't that something too that, um, you know, our, our colleagues were talking about further looking into to see what the, I guess you could say legal guidelines or restrictions that we could potentially impose just to kind of curb, you know, any increase? I just was curious, um, would hate to, I know this is one of those tough decisions when they talk about being in compliance with the state and we already know when we're not in, not in compliance, we don't follow stuff, we get fined or whatnot. So, but wasn't that something that we had all talked about, kind of looking further into?
Yes, yes.
So Mr. Mayor, if I may, if, if Councilman Chisholm is done?
And if I could just get this pointed, uh, And if I could just get just a pointed uh clarification with Councilman Chisholm, um was it some direction that we needed? Did you want the administration to do something? What 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 was exactly we should be doing? Because I know we had discussion about it.
Yeah, I know um in the past, Councilman Williams had talked about, I guess, approaching the state some kind of way and conversing with them on that. Um but other than that, I really don't know which way, you know, we would go either, as far as if it was something administratively, if it was something all of our colleagues would just research on their own, if there's a component in there that each one of us will pick up and come back to the table with. I'm I'm not a hundred percent clear on that myself.
Yeah, this could probably be part of our legislative agenda for um our our representative, our senator and our congresswoman. Maybe that's something that you can help me facilitate and uh we talk to them and then move forward, um seeing what we can do. Because at this point, it's just, man, for us to not have have no teeth at all, she can get, ooh, it's like the wild, wild west.
Mr. Mayor?
Please, Mayor Pro Tim.
You said that um what what's other municipalities have you checked just to find out how many homes, group homes or whatever that that they had in their communities? Did you say, did you mention Livonia or?
Yeah, that was just um just public record um as it relates to how many they have in there and 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 Livonia, you know, I had that information before me, but I don't want to just give you a number arbitrarily.
Okay, because I know it was lower than what we had, it was lower than what we had.
It was way lower.
So maybe we, I don't know, maybe we need to talk to them to find out how they keeping it at a certain number that they keeping it at.
Yeah, we know that pro- property values, of course, play a factor in in that. And then, you know, um you know, when we talk about renters versus homeowners, Livonia and demographics versus Inchester demographics, that was kind of what we were talking about ultimately was probably the determining factors of folks being able to open up these type of homes.
Right.
Okay, Mayor, um Mayor Pro Tim, are you, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, there's nothing to preclude each council per- person from contacting a sister city and inquiring about this and finding out what they have on their books that keep their numbers so slow. So I think each of us should take a uh cities and and go back and find out this information about it. Because like I said, uh when I got this report from the police department and once again thanked them because they were so in depth, I asked for the uh fire numbers too, but they were unable to assist me. But they've got to be more since they go on runs of uh medical natures, which most of these houses, you know, have. So I think each of us ought to select a city and contact that city and find out how their ordinance reads where group homes and because I understand even though we have sixty-one and only thirty-nine are licensed, there are other homes that don't even require a license that just spring up all over the city too. And we don't have the manpower to stay on top of these, you know? We don't uh the so we're going to have to figure out some way to um address this, just like right now with those thirty-nine. If there was some sort of letter, we could even send out to those thirty-nine telling them, you haven't had a license since then. And and nowhere does it state what these penalties are for not doing what you're supposed to do, just penalties for City of Inchester not doing what it's supposed to do. I mean, this is a two-way street. There are two kinds of relationships, reciprocal and exploitative. And if you're not giving as good as you're getting, you're being exploited.
Yeah, and we've already started that process as it relates to uh those homes that we've identified that don't have a a C of O license or anything. Um so that that's happening already as we're speaking.
Yeah, uh what I can definitely do is um follow up with uh the senate office tomorrow and try to see what we can find out.
And and too, Mayor, is this something that our lobbyists might be able to help us with or no?
Well, I'm those to task them with that. I like that. That's a good idea. I'll definitely get on top of that.
Mayor?
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Washington. Uh Councilman Williams?
Yeah, I agree, I agree with uh Councilwoman uh Watley. We need to take a city and see what they have and 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 uh what policies they have and very and come back, let's get back together. Um and and take a real serious look at what they have in there. And one uh I don't know who wants to take Livonia, but we need to see how Livonia, Livonia don't have about what, eleven, about eleven?
Yeah, yes, it's it's low. It's definitely low compared to how many people they have in the community and homes. So what I'll do is I'll have Rhonda formulate an email and I'll send out to everybody as it relates to this tomorrow. And um then everybody kind of respond back on what city you'll take and we'll go from there. Is that okay?
So I I think we're in order to uh table this this issue.
Um, this is a second reading and approval. So the maker of the motion, which is Mayor Pro Tim Howard, would have to amend that?
Okay, well, okay, I will amend my motion to table it.
Until the next meeting?
Till the next meeting.
Is there support? The support to table this issue?
Support.
All right, uh any discussion on that? Hearing none. Rule call please.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
We have five yays, Mayor.
All right, moving right along, do business.
Consideration and approval of the implementation of a residential target market analysis, including a commercial target market analysis.
Their motion? Their motion?
I'll motion if we go into discussion.
All right, there's support?
Support.
Okay, all right. Caitlin's on the line. I know Caitlin's on the line. I don't know if Sharon, Caitlin is 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 Shannon on? I don't think anyone from the state is on the line.
I just unmuted Caitlin right now.
Okay.
Okay, um I do not see Sharon, no. And?
Just give us a little history and I'll fill in where I can.
Okay, so um last year, we implemented a residential target market analysis um with Land Use USA. The Michigan Department of Treasury reimbursed us the full cost of the um analysis. Um now we are in the implementation uh phase of that and the Michigan Department of Treasury is offering to once again reimburse us for the costs of um using C I B planning to help implement what we've the findings of the analysis and start marketing it for us. Um and then they were also including a commercial um target market analysis in that as well.
And this is Caitlin, one of the most important things is just gonna make us a
It's gonna make us ours redevelopment-ready community. Um it's another step towards that.
And the state is actually picking up the full cost of this. Um of course, we would have to accept it as the work is being done on our behalf. Um so that's why we brought this before you right now.
And that was, I'm I'm glad you guys brought that up because that was the thing, you know, that did raise some concerns as we saw that on our packet, thirty thousand dollars. But we were like, where's this money coming from? So if?
Yeah, I actually put it in the email.
Okay.
And I slipped that packet out. That the 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 state was actually paying for it. It's actually forty-five thousand. Is uh fifteen thousand for the commercial analysis. It's kind of what the residential market analysis study showed us as it relates to the gaps within uh our housing, uh stock within the city of Inchester. Um the commercial uh piece now would actually identify properties in 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 community, what they are, who owns them, um potential commercial properties, potential developments, looking at uh what uh we accumulate, what we've accumulated with the dumbest group along with McKenna and Associates and Hamilton as a relation of the downtown development plan and looking at uh marketing that. And the state has agreed to pick up all of the costs for this. So this is nothing that we would, it would be caveat to the motion would be um that the state is going to pay the cost, not the city of Inchester. Okay.
Um if Councilman Chisholm is true, then the city, he said, when they, what I read was there are a lot of little sundry costs within that. Is that all part of what the state is going to pick up too? Because there was some other, there was some other pricing within that stands the thirty thousand. Um you know, so I'm just making sure that that money is taken care of too. And part two to my question is, um are, and when they talk about downtown, are they talking about repurposing property or they talking about tearing it down and putting new in? Is that part of the plan?
It'll be what we what we cut, what we come up with. I mean, we're looking at, you know, what the previous administration had presented as it relates to, you know, total new new buildings. At the same time, we know that, you know, the city hall alone is going to cost us almost a million dollars to tear it out um and remediate. And so are we going to look at whatever, you know, makes sense for the current market? That's what I think makes this tool so valuable is because they can look at, you know, what other communities are doing across the nation compared to us. And and then they're going to help us actually find a developer to 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 in turn with tax credits, incentives that may be available, opportunity zones, uh monies to be able to help us get a finished product.
The reason I'm inquiring is because those buildings are quite old and I'm sure there's some environmental issues with a lot of things that have to do with that.
For certain.
So um you know, like asbestos and mated and a lot of other things. So I was wondering about how that goes about.
Yeah, so of course, it would be in again in the study, the study's going to give us information. I mean, everything that we do, we want to be data-driven. So um the state is working along with me to make sure that we're doing that to the best of our ability as we're looking to repurpose the buildings or even to tear them down and, you know, add a new development if that's feasible.
All right, that was um a couple of my concerns, all being paid for by them. Oh, that was the question you didn't ask, the the uh the little money that was within that packet that will be, you know, because they had some fees in there.
All of the cost is being picked up by the state. It's uh about forty-five thousand actually.
Thank you.
We're presenting this free to you tonight so we could actually get to work because the state, um they were supposed to be on the line tonight, but who knows what happened? At at any rate, um we, they asked me to put it on the tonight's agenda so we could move forward and uh have something back by August, I mean, I'm sorry, uh by early October.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, um I have a question.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim.
It says in here, this is for phase one. Um how many phases is this? And once again, will the state be picking a hundred percent of this up?
Yeah, number one, yeah, they'll definitely be picking up. We know for sure this part of it is just to really, I guess, it again, give us some meat and potatoes as it relates to a development, what that development will look like. And then um actually connecting us with developers um to to actually do the project. So and after that, it may be another phase that comes along with that. Um that the developer will be involved in and along with the state and uh Land USA. So um as it relates to a cost from there, I don't know what that cost factor will be. I just know that this is the first and probably the most important part of it.
Okay, because it's got like the schedule fees, uh fee schedule professional consultants, that's uh by paid by the hour. Are you sure? I mean, I mean, I understand you've spoken to the state, but our, but on here, it's got hourly rate or subject to increase on an annual basis.
Yeah.
We don't have anything in our package. You emailed us, but we don't have anything from the state that's guaranteeing us that they're going to pay a hundred percent.
Yeah, I I get I get what I get what you're saying, but at the at the same time, I'm asking that this body approve us taking on the, taking this on without paying anything. So we're not going to pay anything without the state um taking care of it. And they have assured me that they are going to take care of it. So um I'll get something in writing from them, however you want to do that. Um but it's just all about timing at this point. But we're not spending a dollar. We're not going, I'm not going to sign anything without us uh from permission from this body. I'm not going to sign anything without us uh having something in writing from the state guaranteeing that because we don't have the money. I know that.
Okay. Well, is this something that we can add to this uh council request for the council record? Um um.
And that's what I would ask for this body to do. So I would ask that the maker of the motion as it relates to discussion, um just add that to the motion that um you know, I don't sign it until we get something in writing from the state saying that they're going to pay for.
I would like to.
Uh one more, I'm sorry, uh Councilman Chisholm. The reason why I'm saying this because we've had something like this done like a previous council and I think the council before that. And we still haven't had any results in anything. So I'm just trying to figure out what is really going on. I mean, I know that we need, we need some kind of help, but I know Richard Rooton, who was once a planner in 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 on the planning commission, I know him in Michigan State, I think that's where he's at, they came in and gave us a presentation that was free. And it was a lot of ideas, good ideas that they came up with. And nothing never happened. So I'm just wondering, you know, it's just seems like?
This is a little bit different because I have the state of Michigan, um the treasurer's department, along with the MEDC, along with the county at the table with me presenting this. This is um something that we're looking to make happen and wield it into happen. So we're not just, the fears. Now also too, all of the things that you talked about, all that information is has been set forth to Land USA and um the state and and the MEDC. So they're all aware of everything that we've been doing and we just want to make sure that we can find it so we can get the best effort and uh the best quality as it relates to this possible development as we're moving the city along. And it's free.
Okay, so is the, is the funds, do we have to pay any money and they reimburse us? Or how is that work? So they're going to just pay, gotta do anything, no money upfront, they just going to do everything?
I I I'm not, I'm not saying that because this is the first time I actually just heard Caitlin say that it's a reimbursement, but they didn't tell me we were reimbursing. They were saying that they were getting the money approved from the state to pay for it for us. So that's why I wanted to make, go ahead, Caitlin.
So um the previous, before the um for the residential target market analysis, the way it worked was that we did the upfront payment and then they reimbursed us. And I was, I'm assuming that's the way it would work this time as well. The funds are already approved and set aside. That's just the way that it, they run it, I guess.
You said funds is just already approved, approval, what on the on the states or our end?
The funds are approved from the Michigan Department of Treasury.
So the, in in so we would have to put up our money first?
Right.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying right to that, you know, I again, I I think what Caitlin is saying in the in the past, that that's what's happened. But from the discussions that I've been talking to them, um they were getting approvals to actually write the check for this directly to the contractor. So this is nothing that we would have to be necessarily involved in or responsible for. So um you know, I get clarification on that, but as it relates to just moving the project forward, understanding it won't be a cost to the city, that I would ask this body to 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 make a motion as it relates to that, if I can get support to move this project forward.
Okay, Maker, um which is Chisholm, Councilmember Chisholm, right?
Yes.
I'm not sure what you were saying there, but you got to um, I mean, phase two, I'm not even looking to spend it on money. If if things aren't going right, I'm not, I don't want to put Inchester on the hook of paying any money.
Yeah, I won't do, I won't, I won't do that. You guys already spent fifty thousand last year for something that didn't come to fruition. So I I'm not going to do that. So I, I'm not gonna do that. So I understand that everything that I do and I'm presenting to you, I'm trying to bring in revenue and increase our tax base. So, um, as it relates to your motion, then I would just say that if I don't come up with the money, then we just don't do the study. Let's make it simple.
I have a question. I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes, I'm finished. Go ahead.
Uh, I'm sorry. Um, this exclusion, I was kinda, um, confused about this. Number one, uh, where they state that formal presentation with slide shows in-person meetings before city council or planning commission and or facilitation, facilit- uh facilitation of in-person work sessions, community meetings or other public events. So there will be no presentation from the companies that the exclusion?
Yeah, they'll be assigned to Land USA. Land USA is actually, um, the, 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 the C, C I B is the planner and they'll work with us, but Land USA is sharing, she's actually um heading up the market analysis study altogether. So she would be the person that would do that.
Okay.
So if, are you Councilwoman, uh, Washington?
Oh, I'm done.
All right. I would like to amend my motion that we table this until the following council meeting pending the paperwork that the mayor will be getting per council's request.
Okay, support.
Okay. Uh, any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams? And Councilmember Watley?
Yeah.
Mayor, we have six yeses.
All right, motion is tabled. All right, next one.
Item B is consideration and approval of an offer to purchase a one vacant residential lot which is located on the north side of Riverview Street between Harrison and Harriet as duly noted in the amount of five hundred dollars to Jordan Sidney.
Go move. There's support?
Support.
Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Williams? Mayor Proton Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
We have five yeses.
Our motion carries. Next one, please.
Item C is consideration and approval of an offer to purchase one residential garage attached to a currently owned three-two-eight-zero Luddington which duly noted in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to platinum acquisition.
What's your plan? What's your plan? Your motion?
I'll motion to go into this, I'll make a motion so we can go into discussion.
Support.
All right, then discussion. Questions? So this is a, for, for me then Caitlin, jump it, jump in. Um, this is a garage that kinda like what was, what happened with the other property that we just had before us a few months back. This is a garage that's attached to this person's property. They already owned a three-two-eight-zero Luddington, correct?
Right.
And they have a garage connected to it.
Correct.
Okay, and they're looking to purchase it in an amount of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Um, this is an attached garage?
It's a detached garage, but it's on, it's connected to the house. So the house should be together, the garage, the driveway goes up to the garage that, that would be for the house, but that lot was foreclosed on in twenty thirteen and the house was foreclosed on in twenty seventeen.
Okay.
So, so they, they bought the house in twenty seventeen?
Yes.
And the garage wasn't listed with it at the time, even though it had been foreclosed on in twenty thirteen?
Correct.
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, I'd like to, uh, I have a question. Um, why is it that they are separate all the time? Because this is not the first time this has come up.
Caitlin, can you answer that question?
Yes. So, um, a lot of times people will buy a vacant lot next to their house and they don't combine the lots. So when the lots aren't combined, one lot can go into foreclosure while the other one stays out of foreclosure if they don't pay the taxes on it.
Yeah, that's pretty simple.
Yeah, and, and just to, to kinda reiterate what, what Caitlin was saying, I've seen that situation um on multiple occasions where someone may not realize that their uh property is actually split into multiple uh parcels. Um, and so they may be paying on the main parcel uh in terms of property taxes and not paying on um, kinda the, the lesser uh value parcel. So that um property can go into foreclosure um, and then, you know, dominoes kinda fall from there. Um, but it's really just a, a situation where if the owner's not aware of um that their property that they may view as one parcel actually could be, um, you know, two or more parcels. And they need to be able to, to track that or combine those into one for um simply, you know, to make it more simple, but uh, it, you know, it does happen um from time to time.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Watley?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams? Mayor Proton Howard? Mayor Proton Howard?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
We have five yeses, Mayor.
All right, so move. Public participation, uh, this brings us to the time of our agenda. We'll allow the public to speak uh for one minute. Um, our, uh, councilperson Steve Chisholm is actually wearing dual hats. He's our host, one of our hosts for Zoom, so if you could just give him the particulars, Councilman Chisholm?
Sure. For all callers who have called in tonight that wish to speak during public participation, please press star nine on your handset so that you can be recognized or so your hand can be raised, you can be recognized to speak at this time. And of course, when we unmute you, please state your name for the.
And one minute.
One minute. All right. You have one minute to speak. Um, so Mr. Mayor, how do you wanna do it? Do you wanna just jump in and say, hey? You want me to jump in and say, hey, this up or?
Yeah, I got the time, so I'll let you, I got you.
Okay. All right, I'm using the first one now.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Kilgore and I live at three-twenty-five Shadelon. I've been here sixty-one years, most of my life. I'm a retired postal carrier from the city of Inkster. One of the main problems we have going on right now is the mini bikes, the four-wheelers and the dirt bikes. And we wish to eliminate the problem. On this side of Inkster, we have a lot of homeowners, a lot of seniors, a lot of people working from home, and it's like a daily destruction. It's like twenty-four seven. So I'm addressing this issue to the council to find out what we can do as citizens to alleviate the problem.
Ms. Kilgore, what's uh, if you don't mind sharing, do you have a email address or phone number we can get back in contact with you?
Yes, um, he has my phone number. Chisholm?
All right, good then. Yeah, we got, we, we have it. And let me just say right off that we are aware of the, of the issue. I mean, we all, of course, live here in the city of Inkster. There's definitely a problem. Um, we're looking at us.
Let me cut you for one second. It's been a major issue since the pan epidemic. But what I real, but I don't think these children realize that it's a safety issue too.
Yeah.
And I was even thinking that if you could put it into future reference to maybe have some kind of safety classes that are outside because of the pan epidemic to instruct to these children because they don't understand. Especially with cars coming down my street at seventy miles an hour.
Yep.
I can do that.
We're, we're definitely working on traffic calming measures as it relates to speed bump signs and.
Okay.
So, uh, we'll definitely keep you informed, okay?
Okay, thank you so much. And you can get my intelligence too from, uh, Mr. Chisholm.
I, I, I definitely will. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. All right, next person, please.
And I just unmuted that.
Hi, uh, this is Cody Corbin. I'm an attorney that represents Forever Care Homes. Um, I tried to interject a couple of times during the discussion on the proposed zoning ordinances to raise a couple of points. Um, first, at Michigan compiled laws one-two-five-point-three-two-oh-six, it makes specific reference that the requirement that you treat adult foster care facilities the same as equivalent density residential units only applies to licensed um facilities. And if you look at um what the state requires and what is in common practice among licensed facilities, it involves a lot of, you know, twenty-four-seven care, um, video monitoring and stuff like that. That makes the number of calls for police and other emergency services fairly minimal. Um, I know our client's been in business for over five years and has only had a handful of emergency calls. And what you really have to compare this to is the situation that would arise if there were no foster care facilities and the resulting homelessness and emergency hospitalizations that result from people not having attentive care. Um, Ms. Asmar is also on the call and can speak more to the specifics on the ground here, but I wanted to chime in on a few of the legal issues.
All right, thank you very much, sir. We appreciate the comments.
All right, thank you very much.
Next person, please.
They got some interference. I'm gonna try it again. Caller three-five-nine-seven, you had a lot of interference when we unmuted you just now. Hold on one second.
There's some other folks, you have music in the background.
Yeah, I was trying to care for that too. All right. So we're gonna try again with three-five-nine-seven and unmute them.
All right.
Nope.
Right. All right, we had a call from earlier. I know it was, was Ms. Lockett.
Oh, yeah, Lockett.
Two-seven.
I don't, let me, let me look on the participation line, uh.
If I could just say that I know that her question was, uh, as it relates to the polling station for the Twin Towers being moved um to Recreation Complex, um, she was wondering if we would provide, is the seniors, uh, the senior commission providing transportation um, from the Twin Towers over to the rec complex? And I didn't necessarily have an answer for, you have an answer for City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, no, they are not providing transportation. Um, the Twin Towers has voted pretty heavily um absentee. And let me just state that I chose to move the Twin Towers, their um voting locations just for, you know, two unique reasons. Um, number one, the senior population um there, they reside there. That polling location is kinda unique than any other polling location. And with COVID going on and the mandates that um have been brought down by the governor with no mask um having to be worn in the polling locations and then just recently that there's no amount of people, um, there's no limit on the amount of people that can be in the polling locations. I felt it best um because that population resides there and that they are seniors. Um, a lot of them are in the high-risk group that that polling location needed to be moved. Um, I, I'd rather um not expose them um to COVID. Um, I know he, some people might be a little upset, although they have voted pretty heavily absentee um in there. Uh, they voted so heavily, I've had to um dip into my regular ballots for that polling location. Um, I, I used all my absentee ballots. So they voted pretty heavily absentee. I also had contact with housing regarding this and also with some residents that reside within the um Twin Towers to get the words out. So they, they have, um, quite a few of them have voted um absentee.
Okay. Okay, okay. And then if, if anyone needs transportation in that area, um, we'll, we'll see, I'm gonna see if I could talk, coordinate with Denise because she's actually housed out of there as well.
Okay.
First thing in the morning, so I'll talk to her about that.
Okay.
All right, good, thank you. And do you have anybody else, Councilman Chisholm?
Yes, we have the caller, um, three-five-nine-seven called back in, so I'm assuming they tried to reconnect so they could speak.
Okay.
And I'm gonna unmute them now.
Hi, yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Hi, hi, yes, my name is Charles Blackwell. Um, I have a pending lawsuit against the city of Inkster and uh Wayne County Circuit Court currently for violations of the FOIA law. Um, during the negotiations that you have with your city attorney, Mr. Jones, I think that you need to have a hard look at Mr. Jones and the city clerk, uh, for these reckless actions in this matter. I emailed them a few times before the lawsuit was filed to try to get them to provide the appropriate response, but they failed to respond back to me. So I think that during your negotiation that you need to take a hard look at Mr. Jones and figure out why are you paying Allen Brothers all this money each month if he's not going to help uh protect the city against lawsuits? And that's all I have to say.
All right. Do you have anyone else, Mr. Chisholm? This Chisholm, you guys just self-muted.
Yeah. I just unmuted their caller.
We are, well, you got another one?
Yes.
Hello?
All right. State your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Russia Asmar. I am the provider for Forever Care Homes.
Go ahead.
And I'm, I'm, I'm calling on behalf of the ordinance that you guys are trying to change to allow AFC homes to be in the city of Inkster, uh, twelve or less or twelve or more. I am one of the applicants in the process. I've been in the process for about a year and a half now. And um, we've kinda hit a wall and I kinda wanted to just answer some of your concerns, if I may do so.
Go ahead, you have a minute.
One of your concerns was, last meeting was the census, and I wanted to provide and let you guys know that all of our residents are registered Inkster residents. And they were all a part of the census process this last week. They've turned in all their, every, all their paperwork and they're all uh, were accounted for for the city of Inkster. On your police matter, I've looked at our personal records. We are a licensed and certified home. We have two homes in the city of Inkster and we've probably over in the five, last five years, maybe had a handful of police interaction and only due to the safety of the residents, maybe having to be hospitalized, which is this protocol for the police to show up regardless. So I wanted to kind of let you guys just kind of know where those kind of lie. We are not a nonprofit. We do pay taxes. We do pay rent, we do, we do our re-renters every two years. We follow that protocol and pay our fees. Um, nine, almost ninety percent of our staff is from Inkster, our management, our cond- our custodians, our maintenance men, women, our lawn care, our snow removal, our all employers of, our all residents of the city of Inkster. Um, those were the points that were made last week and some that were made this week. I just wanted to let you know if you have any questions about the concerns or anything along those lines, I'm here to answer those questions. We try to change the name of, of adult foster care homes and not to just have everybody think that it's like a mental hospital and people are just running around all over the place. We have twenty-four hour care, we have security, we have cameras. We are diligent in our work and wanna continue working in the city of Inkster, with the city of Inkster.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Anything, anyone else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, let's move right along. City Clerk?
I can't unmute myself. Um, I want to let residents know to, um, I can't unmute myself. I want to let residents know to please get out and vote tomorrow. Hopefully you have already voted absentee just due to the COVID pandemic. So hopefully you have already voted. If not, the polls are open tomorrow from seven AM until eight PM. Thank you, mayor.
All right, you're welcome. And I have my absentee ballot, so I gotta fill it out, so I gotta hand it to you in the morning. Do I get a sticker?
Yes, sir.
Say I voted? I'm coming to the clerk's office and hand mine to you.
Okay.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Mayor and, I'm sorry, your city treasurer. Treasurer, you got anything for us?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. I forgot. Why is he doing the thumbs up? I'm like, talk.
There we go. Mr. Treasurer?
Thank, thank you. Just one comment. We just want to remind everyone that we are currently collecting the summer tax bills. I know there have been some questions of, some may not have gotten the bills. If anyone needs that information, they can call City Hall or come up to the Treasury and we can provide you with a copy of those, of your tax bill. And the tax bills are due without any interest or penalty. The summer tax bills are due by August thirty-first, so that's all I have.
I know that there's been an issue with the mail itself because your office sent out the tax bills back in July the thirteenth, if I'm not mistaken correct?
Yeah, so it, you know, depending on the, how long it's taken to get, but I believe by now everyone should have a copy. Sometimes, you know, a copy may not, the bill may not get to the, you know, right address or we may not have an updated address on file. Could be any number of reasons. So for whatever reason, someone, anyone has not received their bill, I would encourage them to, to reach out to us.
All right, sounds good.
May I interject on that point?
Yes, ma'am.
I have several people who have called me and said they have not received their taxes yet. I have not received my taxes yet. So he's saying that most of them should be out, so if we haven't, we need to get a copy of it?
Well, if, if you haven't, I would certainly encourage you to, you know, the one day information is available online, but I also wanted to just let people know that if they haven't, then we can assist them with getting that, getting that information. But shortly after the budget was approved by council, we got the information to the printer. They printed it, got it ready for mail and get sent it out. So I know a number of residents have gotten them. We have been getting some calls for people that haven't gotten it. I don't have any way of really knowing who, you know, what percentage of people have, have received them and what percentage of people have not. But, you know, with the bills being due by the end of the month, to avoid any interest or penalty, we don't want to, you know, delay people from getting, if they need that information in order to facilitate their payment.
Okay, and that's why they're calling, because usually by now they would have received them. So if we are asking for a copy of that bill, can we call and find out what the amount is? Because I'm staying home and saving lives, you know, I don't, I don't spend too much time outside. So can we, can we call and get the number?
They can, can call and, can call and get the number. As I said, the information is available online and we can, you know, certainly provide that information to them. You know, we, we aren't in a position to answer all those calls as they come in and get that information, but we can certainly, if we aren't able to pick up the phone, we can pull that information down and get it back to them via phone or email.
And that was another point they had, that when they did call, it transferred them to, transferred to transfer. So I'm just trying to find out the best way for these citizens to pay their taxes, because that's what we want them to do.
For sure.
Without a lot of extracurricular activity.
Yep, yeah, and, and that's, that's certainly what we want to do. We don't want to force anyone to have to go out of their way. So again, if there's anyone who hasn't gotten the bill, we can try and do that. We can provide the numbers verbally or the phone. We can send a copy of the tax bill via email. They can look that information up online. There are a number of different ways we can get that information to, to the resident or to the homeowner, I should say.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman, you want to continue on since you had the phone?
Thank you. I was just getting ready to say I'm not through. The, the, I forgot. I knew actually there went for something else first. But it was the, the, one of the things was the taxes. The other thing is a, there's a problem on our street. And I've talked with ordinance, then I've talked with the police, and it's regarding a person who is conducting a loud or a big business over there. They have a bounce house out. I'm sure a lot of people who have passed by have seen this situation, and I'm getting numerous complaints. I talked again with the ordinance officer today, and the problem is, is that people can pretty much do whatever they want to do in their own home. But when it begins to create a problem within the neighborhood and there's no recourse, you know, because they're really not doing anything illegal, it's just extremely annoying and aggravating for their neighbors, and it looks bad in the neighborhood. So possibly I can send you an address. And I'm talking about the mayor and see if there's something that you can add to this situation because I'm not having a lot of success with the people that continue to call me. And it's hard to tell people there's nothing you can do about something that's, you know, out of the norm. So that was the other thing, the taxes. Oh, one other thing. I have asked for this before, and I'm going to ask again. I would like to have a weekly update about what's going on in the city. It's unfortunate that I have to get most of my information from people who call me and tell me things that are going on. What I would like to do, and I asked back in March in an email for weekly updates, I'll take two weekly updates. I'll take two week updates, just as long as I have some idea of what's going in the city. Because it's very hard to do your job or answer questions when people call you, and they're giving you more information than you have from the city itself. So I'm asking once again for weekly updates or bi-weekly updates or something of that nature.
Yep, and, and we're, we're in the process of getting back to that just because of COVID, you know, we were off for a while. But at the same time, we, we will be providing monthly updates from each department. If it's something that you're looking for specifically, please, you know, call me direct, send me an email, whatever we need to do. We'll definitely get you that information as it relates to the council meetings. I mean, we have two council meetings a month, so. You know, if we have something that we need to bring before you, we definitely will do that in relation to that. Because believe me, I hear a lot of stuff, too, as the mayor is going on in the city. It's like, okay, I did not know about that, or it's just rumors. So we want to make sure that we're clarifying those things as we move along together.
Right, well, you just want to make sure that what you are hearing, you can at least welch it at that level. You know, if it's not something that's going on, or, you know, like I said, I'm really tired of saying, really? Did that happen for real? So I'm just asking, that's all. Did I, did I hurt him? Hello? Hello?
One second. Oh, he done froze.
Yeah, I thought I did something.
Troy had actually gave us a heads up earlier, let us know too. We might encounter some interference, so.
All right, I guess if you're done, Councilwoman Wiley, then we can move on.
Yes.
All right.
Mayor Wimbley's back.
He's back, okay.
I don't know where he went though. I saw him. Said he was connecting audio. Okay. Oh, yeah, there he is. Hold on, he's muted.
Yeah, I was prepared this time. I knew it was gonna happen. Like, you know, this computer, it only has two hours of life or two hours, so I did hear everything. I was right here with Troy. Did you have anything else, Councilwoman Wiley? I definitely want to make sure that we get you everything that you need. Okay. Going right along then, Councilman Williams, do you have anything for us?
Well, first of all, let me, let me thank the mayor, the mayor and Jerome Bibbins, the DPS for a job well done over on Pine Street. That's been a big issue over there, but the bushes and things like that. I understand that they kind of cleaned them off the fence and kind of make the ball diamond, look like it's a ball diamond now. And so I just want to bring that, commend them for doing this, that, you know.
Thank you.
And the ladies and all of the seniors over there was complaining about it, and they're happy. They've been cleaned out and that now. They don't have to worry about it by attacking them into the bushes because they all been moved. And I just want to thank, thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. I definitely will pass that along. You guys have definitely been working hard in DPS.
Yes.
Did you have anything else, sir?
That's it.
All right, Councilman Chislam?
Yes. I did reach out to Ms. Kilber that we spoke to earlier tonight just to get her email address, because I had her phone number and address and everything already. She stays right in my district. So soon as I get that, I'll fork that as, as well, because I already sent her name and her email address. I'm sorry, her name and her telephone number. And then, so just regarding, I guess with everything that's transpiring in Inster housing, I know there's some tensions rising revolving around the matter. However, I just wanted to bring up, I guess we should take note, and I don't know exactly how you may want to address it, but you do have an employee over there who is in fear right now with different statements and harassing that has occurred, and then even statements against the Inster Police Department. I can further address those with you after the meeting if you like or any other time, but I just wanted to bring that up to you and my colleagues just to kind of be on the lookout, so we can stay on top of things as all of that is unfolding.
Yes. Yeah, thank you so much, Councilman Chislam. I definitely look forward to speaking with you. I'll call you right after the meeting. Councilwoman Washington?
I just wanted to bring up a concerning issue. I had a couple of residents call me today about Meadow Lane. There's a cess of speeding. Two weeks ago, a car hit a, hit two other cars. And also another car ran into a tree. The person got back in the car, the young man got back in the car and drove off. So they're having a lot of issues over there with just gang activity and also speeding. I also spoke with chief about that, but I just want to bring that issue up because I, I keep consistently getting those issues coming up.
Okay. All right. Did you have anything else, ma'am?
Just for residents, just letting them know also, DTE, somebody had contacted me today. DT, DTE has twenty-three million dollars to help provide for bills. For anyone who has available utilities, all you need is a S E R determination letter, or you can call one eight hundred four seven seven four seven four seven. And they're able to help almost anybody.
That's good. Anything else?
No, that's all.
All right, Mayor Protim?
Only thing that I have to say is, I, our postal service, the post, the mailman who comes down on a regular basis, we had mail that was late, and due to the COVID, some of the people are getting sick and not showing up. So maybe that's something that we probably need to call them and ask them in regards to the mail that's being mailed within Inster and is still not getting out. That may be a problem. That may be something that's going on there, too.
Yep. I do have a call into the postmaster from actually talking to the city clerk about some issues with the Inster site, so I definitely will be following up with them on that as well.
Okay, and also to census, we still have to talk about the census, so hopefully everything is going and our numbers are going up. And I'm not sure if Curtis Steen was on the line, or you can speak on her behalf for that in regards to census, but I'm done.
Yeah, good. If Curtis Steen is on the line, Stephen, you see her, you can let her chime in because she's doing an excellent job. And Motorcade was a huge success. I saw a lot of our council members out, you know, in the, in the Motorcade. So the community stakeholders are working alongside Curtis Steen. So if Curtis Steen is there, you want to, is she there, Stephen?
I'm here.
Go ahead, Ms. Barsh.
I have to thank everybody that showed up in the rain for our Motorcade. It was simply fabulous. You would have thought, I at one point was ready to make phone calls and cancel, but one new person, Aaron Sim, showed up, and he just mumbled under his breath, ye of little faith. And it seems like the whole thing turned around. I looked at the census figures yesterday. We're up one tenth of a percent, and we're up one tenth of a percent again today. So I don't know if it's because of our signage or our motorcade, but whatever it is, if we keep throwing enough spaghetti against the wall, something is going to stick.
I tell you, thank you so much, Curtis Steen, for your leadership and everything that you're doing. Of course, it's incumbent upon all of us when we ask, you know, like, what can we do for our community? The census is it, you know, above everything, you know, of course, staying clean and safe as, as much as we possibly can within the community. The census is something that we can all get involved in. Now, I did get a complaint, and I just, I have to address this complaint because it came from a citizen. And she said, well, you, you got the Motorcade out, but why do you have a police? And why do you have fire working in conjunction with that? She even went on to say that we, we all know about the census, and we all know what we have to do. Well, we know that, yeah, while folks know about the census in general, it's a lot of people that don't know about the census and showing that we have a unified front with our police department, understanding that the chief of police has made sure that we have coverage everywhere throughout the city, working with our auxiliary service as well. We have those people in play for us to be, make sure that we're staying safe as we're out on our Motorcade. And then, of course, with our fire unit as well, if they have to break away for a call, then they have to break away for a call. So know that we are using taxpayers' money in the best responsible way as it relates to this issue of census is our number one priority because we, we have to get the, we have to get above thirty thousand. They have us projected for twenty-five thousand from two thousand and ten. They said we would be twenty-five thousand in twenty twenty. So we're looking to be up to thirty thousand. So I know that working with Curtis Steen, we can get this done. So I'm looking forward to her continued action. And you have another event coming up in Darkmouth Square. When is that event, Curtis Steen?
That is August fourteenth. It's Jazz on the Lawn at Darkmouth Square from five until eight.
And as it relates to social distancing concerns and all of that stuff?
Yes, there will be social distancing. Everybody to bring, who comes, needs to bring their own lawn chair. And I'm not sure how the apartment will lay it out yet, but they're, they have some pretty strict rules, too, as far as social distancing.
All right, then. Okay, so Mayor Protim, did you have anything else?
No, that was it. Thank you.
All right, then. So that's that. And then let me just say, as it relates to speed bumps, we're working right now with Darren, our treasurer, and Jerome, our DPS director, to see where we can find the money as a city for speed bumps. I've had a lot of citizens say, well, you know what, Wimbley, we'll pay for our own speed bumps. You just get them for us, point us in the right direction. At the same time, we know that we're in control of our local roads, and we want to make sure that we're being responsible and doing as much as we possibly can. So we're looking to see if we can use some of the roads funds money to be able to work on those traffic calming measures. We have put up on our website a basic spreadsheet, so if you have, I know you've identified an actual road that you want to have a speed bump on, please go to our website, cityofinster.com and fill out the form. Also on C Click Fix, you can put that into our C Click Fix app. It's a very good, a very good app to use. We check it daily, so we're working towards making sure that we can get as much as we can, as much assistance we can get. And then we'll roll it out to the community hopefully sooner rather than later. We do have those questions to make sure that we can use some of that Act fifty-one money. As it relates to our planning department, Mrs. Jordan was um, Mrs. Jordan was serving as our planning uh, director. She's moved on. She's still working with us in the consultant type of phase until roughly November. Um, but in the meantime, Caitlin Hines has accepted my offer into leading that department and being our new director of uh, planning, of of planning, of the planning department. And she's um, she's been in the department for the last two years. She was actually wearing dual hats as the special projects manager and the planner at one point in time, so I'm excited about um, what she brings, um, her knowledge, integrity and of course, her institutional knowledge as it relates to the city of Inster and looking forward to really working and developing moving forward. So um, do we have anything for closed session?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, but Councilman Williams is.
Councilman Williams, go ahead.
Now, put, put, put your movement for, I I need to also, can you check into, I I I know a lot of time, a lot of people holler about speed bumps. But can you check into exactly what it would cost and probably get the camera lights? It's just put the camera lights out there when they speed past a certain percentage, the camera takes a picture.
Yeah, so we're actually working on those right now and we do have a grant that the city, um, we were awarded through the um, distressed cities funds uh, for a hundred and forty-five thousand, which we'll be bringing for the next council meeting for you guys to approve. And I don't know if those cameras have those features all the way in it, but I know that I'm working with the chief to get some additional cameras just like that, so we'll have a number of things in play.
These are, these are either speed, anytime you go over a certain speed, say if the speed limit is thirty miles an hour and you go thirty-five, it's snapping, it's snapping your plates.
Yep, I like that. And then just sending you a ticket right to the house.
That's correct.
I like that. All right. All right, uh, you said we did have something, David, for closed session?
Yes.
Okay, motion to go to close session? Is there a motion?
So move.
The support?
Support.
All right. And uh, what's the item that we're going to close session on? Litigation. All right then, role complex?
Councilmember Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Councilmember Wiley?
Yeah.
We have five days, Mayor.
All right, so move. If uh, Steve, before you guys set up the breakout room, and we'll be right back after hopefully a few minutes. All right, let's unmute everybody. All right. Uh, I think everybody, we need everybody else unmuted. Uh, there we go. Because one more Washington as well. All right, perfect. All right, call for German?
So move.
Support.
All right. All in favors? All right. All right, meeting's over. So have a great rest of your week. Thank you so much for joining us.